Completely over? Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not in yet, are you in?
Yeah.
I'm not. No. Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to start over here. We had a little technical difficulties.
Oh, how do you get the mic to shut off? How to get the mic to shut up?
He's been trying to shut off your mic for all year.
Okay, morning, everyone. We will recall this meeting to order. June 4th, 2024. We did already stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We did establish a quorum. And we did approve the agenda with Commissioner Jones moving, Commissioner Richards seconding and all in favor. Now, we had the wrong Zoom link going, so we apologize for the delay here, but we will now open it up for county resident comments and concerns. And if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address a governing body, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda. And we are going to resume where we originally left off, which was under Tab A, the consent agenda before you this morning, commissioners. There are five items this morning, first being the approval of the May 21st, 2024 meeting minutes, the approval of the county vouchers warrants, EALs and the commissioner's report, the approval of bonds, approval of the abates and rebates, and the approval of the hospital maintenance expenditures. Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda. Hearing none, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close an aye. Motion is unanimous. Moving right along in the agenda is Commissioner comments, and we're still ahead of schedule even with the glitch, so we're winning there too. Looks like Commissioner Jones, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the 23rd of May, I attended the Moyle Hospital Sioux River County groundbreaking for the lab expansion and remodel. Great to be a part of such positive move for our county and our residents, so looking forward to the future. On the 25th, I actually flew to Florida to be with my mother for a week and ordered sister with some medical treatments, so my report today is going to be a bit shorter than normal as I was out of town for a week. During that week, I did spend a fair amount of time working on the budget and crunching numbers. In addition to some phone calls. On the 28th, I did attend a meeting with Chairman West, Treasurer Cowan, Rebecca Romero, Public Works Director Legursky, Chief Civil Deputy County Attorney De Leon to discuss the new or updated MOU with the hospital in reference to the depreciation account we previously agreed to move forward on. We all received four different draft MOUs to try and pick from one. I also wonder if there's a way to keep the current MOU that we have signed. And then in addition to that, a separate MOU that essentially says we will set that money aside in that depreciation account, but not give a specific amount each year. That way we don't need to redo an MOU each year with a different amount. I don't know if that's possible. To me, that's a easy way to do it. It would state that we still maintain the funds. We keep the complete discretion on them as far as what they would be spent on, approval of releasing the funds. We would keep any interest. All of those things would be completely in our hands, but the fund would still be there for the hospital to request monies from. So I don't know if Mr. De Leon can. I'm not going to try and outlaw you, so if that works, great. If it doesn't work, so be it. We'll pick from one of the four and but I would like to get that on the agenda for the next meeting. Try and get that done and put behind us one way or another so that we can move forward. So obviously, I was out of town. I was not able to attend the hospital board trustees meeting on the 29th, excuse me. They do not do Zoom for that meeting, so other than that, again, I spent considerable amount of time working on the budget as I know several of us have, probably all of us. Think we're making good progress, it sounds like, and so I will stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Jones, commissioners? If not, hopefully had some nice humid weather to enjoy.
Was slightly warm and slightly moist.
Looks like I'm up next. I too attended the hospital's groundbreaking for the lab project on the 23rd. Appreciate the invitation for that. It'll be a great project for the community. Good to see that money that we gave him going to good use for things the community can be proud of, so appreciate their forward thinking and vision on that project. On the 28th, I attended a meeting with an ambulance. It's the communication team, if you recall. It's probably about a month or so ago, Mayor Mickelson reached out and wanted to kind of set up some committees in regards to ambulance, both with more on the, I guess, political side of things, and then also a group that would be more of the boots on the ground. And so this was kind of the kickoff meeting with that, which included representatives from the county, myself, obviously, and then a couple counselors and the mayor from Rock Springs, representation from the city of Green River, as well as Castle Rock Hospital District. And so it was mainly just an update to discuss what's working, what isn't working, and see if there's anything that we can do to help with those services. Castle Rock did share that they are primarily staffing four ambulances now, with three of those being in Rock Springs and one in Green River, and the thought behind that is so that they always have two in Rock Springs due to the call load, especially when one is removed for transport, so that seems to be working well on their end. They're in talks with Rock Springs about establishing some form of an MOU or an agreement for standby or backup services in the event that, you know, they run into an issue where they are short-staffed or they have all their ambulances out, so the city is gearing up, obviously, as you know, they purchased a couple ambulances to help out with some different events like the rodeo. And together, they seem to be working well, and the reports we received from staff in regards to city staff and Castle Rock staff seem to be establishing some agreements there too, so positive meeting. They did discuss briefly some of the future funding ideas, whether that's a district or the idea of a sales tax was also discussed. Nothing concrete, nothing too firmative for now, but more or less like we've been discussing. If that is going to be the route that everyone decides, it's probably something we want to begin soon, once we all survive budget discussions, so that's all I have for you on that, but good, positive discussions, which I think is good for the overall relationships. Later that afternoon, as Commissioner Jones spoke to, we had a Zoom call in regards to the hospital depreciation fund or account and trying to establish that. I think he and I were the only ones on the email, so there was some four options that Deputy County Attorney De Leon put together for us in regards to kind of just getting everything on paper so that all parties understand. I guess what's involved with the establishment of that account, so I think your suggestion for just having a general MOU is probably easier than trying to revise it every year, and I think we can work with John on establishing that and bring that before you all for the next meeting. It I think verbally in the past, we'd kind of agreed that we were open to explore that, and so now that it's, you know, a matter of budget time and whether or not they have any funds that are going to be rolling over, which it sounds like they will be. There's a request to see if we could establish that in a fund, but we don't really have the details of that fund, you know, kind of on record, so we thought it might be wise to bring that before all of us and them to make sure everyone's on the same page, so appreciate Commissioner Jones and Treasurer Cowan and certainly John for helping us with that, and we'll try and get that cleared up at the next meeting. Also that afternoon, I met with Commissioner Slaughter to go over budgets. That's kind of been the common theme as we approach crunch time here, and I think depending on the day, we have different balances, which is part of the process and part of the scare. There's some nights you don't sleep at all, and then all of a sudden, there's an epiphany and more money seems to roll in, so it's constant moving, moving target, and there's as simple as it sounds, there's a lot of different moving, you know, parts to the budgeting process and projections and grant funding and, you know, ARPA, and so I think collectively, we're all taking an active role in trying to get a good understanding on that, so hopefully we get more of that this afternoon, and we can all finally get some sleep by the end of June. The 29th in the morning, I had Board of Health's monthly meeting. Somewhat light agenda for them. They went over their bylaws and discussed budgets. Sounds like City Rock Springs has funded them 75,000 of the 100,000 they requested. They're still waiting to hear on Green River, and I told them that so far the recommendation has been to fund their request through us in full. They also had their state contracts up for approval, and those were approved unanimously. That evening was Southwest Counseling's monthly meeting. And they elected new officers, so Kayleen Logan has taken over as chair of that board. I did want to give a special shout out to Raven Beatty for her time as spending chair over the last year. It's a difficult role, as chair on, especially a volunteer on a quite complex board, so I admire and appreciate the dedication to that position. Southwest will be here later today, as you all know, to discuss some of the contracts with the Department of Health. They did want to express their appreciation for being involved in the work that was done on the industrial siting process, and that they're very appreciative of working together with all of you and the job well done and representing them, so May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so I wanted to give a plug to the individuals that work in those fields and all the great work they do for Southwest Wyoming. I think that's a that's an area that we're all aware of, but I think the behind the scenes aspect of it is a lot more complex and difficult and, you know, sad in most aspects of what some of these individuals are going through and are having to deal with on a day-to-day basis, and so we hope to be able to provide whatever avenues that may be to improve the resources and continuum of care in this arena. Aside from that, they continue to work with Enroll Wyoming as part of the new mental health redesign, behavioral health redesign. And I think that about does it for the most part. Aside from those, it's been all things budgets and we went over that already, but I appreciate all the phone calls and back and forth with many of you as we work through it. I'm a little more confident this morning after talking with Rebecca and Rob that we're closer to the finish line, so hopefully we can come out ahead from where we originally thought we were, while also giving back to, you know, important needs and services throughout the community, so with that, I'd stand for any questions. And if not, Commissioner Slaughter, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. It has also been a light period for me since our last commission meeting. I went to Texas for a grandson's high school graduation ceremony and spent the week there. Upon returning, I spent most of my time, as both of you have referred to, working on the budget. Last week, I spoke with Rebecca and Christine to get further clarification on grants and some of the other items that were contained in our last budget packet. Afterwards, I spent my time recreating the budget in a format more familiar to me, and I feel much more comfortable with where our budget process stands at this time. I also had discussions with other staff and community members on various issues throughout the end of the week, last week and the first part of this week. On the second, I took a drive down County Road 1, again. I would not advise anyone to do so. I wanted to see what the status of our patchwork and what the general road conditions are. We're going to have a meeting with the County Road 1 Working Group on Wednesday morning. I wanted to be a little bit more prepared for that. Gene will be taking us to see some different road surfaces to help us better understand some of the options that may be available and were suggested in our county road analysis that was previously done. Yesterday, I spent the morning preparing for this meeting and once again reviewing my budget materials, trying to make sure that I was comfortable with where we are and for our discussions this afternoon. In the afternoon, I had my regular monthly meeting with Public Works Director Legursky. We discussed several topics, most of which are contained in his monthly report. So I will go ahead and present his report. Starts out. If I can expand it so that I can read it. Buildings. We are working through the Sweetwater County Library Project schematic drawings. There's been great discussion and input from all parties regarding this project. Plan 1 is continuing with the construction drawings on the Southwest Counseling ARPA projects. On May 25th, 2024, there was a large power outage in Rock Springs that affected the Justice Center complex and the HHS building. On our end, everything went as well as can be expected. The backup generator power turned on and everything changed over well. Kim Lionberger and I discussed long-term problems and solutions if needed at the HHS facility, and the detention center was able to function properly with reduced capacity. The consultant visited two weeks ago for a walkthrough on the Detention Center RTU AHU project. There were no major surprises, however, we will need to add additional wiring and safety features to comply with the new mechanical role. Oh, excuse me, mechanical code. This project will go to bid in the late summer or early fall. AHU 3 at the detention center had a bearing failure on the supply air motor last week. We were able to replace the pillow block, and I got everything back up and running within two days. This item was just serviced in late April, so with all mechanical things that are 20 years old, it's just a matter of time. The staff did a great job coordinating the repair and keeping air movement through the three pods at the AHU services. The bathroom at the Rock Springs Youth Home that was affected by water leaking has been repaired. Later this week, we will start remodeling the bedroom so that the youth home has the correct number of beds for the license renewal. The maintenance crew handled 86 work order requests in May. Road and Bridge Department, we continued hauling material from the Midland Livestock Pit in Sublet County to roads in the Farson Eden area. The 2024 CMAQ project will start on June 17th. Our schedule is, as it currently stands, will be to blade water and apply magnesium chloride to all scheduled roads within a six-week timeframe. We will not be completing any applications of magnesium chloride during the July 4th, 2024 week. Engineering Department, the 2024 chip seal project started up last week, and the contractor was able to complete the chip seal on County Road 3, the FMC Road, and also on County Road 40, the Allied Chemical Road. This week, they will finish applying chip seal on County Road 11, which is the TG Sodash Road, and on County Road 6, which is the OCI Entrance Road. The contractor will then apply the overshoot to all the roads later this week with paint striping to follow the week of June 17th, 2024. R and D sweeping finished a large patch on County Road number 6, the OCI Entrance Road, late last week. We were able to save some money on the patch because we didn't have to go as deep to find stable material within the patch area as we had thought. County Road 1 McKinnon Road Frosty Project is out to bid with a bid date of June 27th, 24. The results of this bid will be presented to the board during the meeting, July 2nd, July 2nd. And last, the Energy Roads Project is going through the 90% design review process. We received word from the Wyoming Energy Authority that they will be able to sponsor our project, so I will present the contract and award notice to the board during the June 8th, 2024 meeting. This is good news and much-needed funding for those roads. That's the approximately $1.5 million that we were informed of by Representative Stiff and through the dedication and working through that project with the governor's office, we were able to get to that point, so I commend them for doing that. With that, Mr. Chairman, I end my report and would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, it's good to see that we can finally put that money to use. I know we were kind of getting a hard time from the governor's office on why we haven't applied for it, but with different strings attached, it made it kind of difficult, so I'm glad to see that that's being put to work. Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report? The air handler at the detention center is part of our capital budget, which I think upgrading that whole project is estimated around $1.8 million, so that was a little foreshadowing for what's ahead on some of that, but hopefully we can fund that by the end of our next workshop. Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work. Commissioner Tom, the floor is yours.
I spent the majority of my time on Zoom meetings with the federal government projects and processes and arbitrary and capricious processes, I might add. Very frustrating. May 22nd, the 386 Transmission Corridor Zoom meeting. Now, that one is progressing because it's part of the green energy transmission line, so they don't seem to have many hangups on that. Chapter 1 and 2 input will be discussed on June 13th at their next Zoom meeting. They will amend all BLM resource plans that are affected. The consistency reviews will be done concurrently after the proposed final comes out. So in other words, they have to do the governor's consistency stating how it is consistent with our federal plan and process. So that will happen through March of July of next year. The most frustrating one of all was on May 22nd, the Old Growth Forest Zoom meeting. He asked why we would participate in that one. We do have forests, and we do have people in our county who go to the forest. It was, it was the it was the most frustrating federal meeting I have ever attended. It was on Zoom. They had the National Forest people on the call asking us to be cooperators when they have already done all of the work, prepared all of the alternatives, and have let us see nothing or provide any input whatsoever, but now they say, oh, don't worry, we're going to have meetings twice a month. For what? I don't know, because they don't want our input. They don't tell us what they have provided. So except for scoping, when through our CLG, we did comment, this is totally outside the normal NEPA process for federal planning. They fill with their purpose and needs statement that was published in the Federal Register as adequate. That should tell us what we need to know about what they're going to do. And that's what I provided to the rocket was the Federal Register notice. Wyoming has two regions of the National Forest, one, Region 2, and Region 4, so we have the Bridger Teton, the Medicine Bow, and the Shoney National Forest. Then the cooperators are going to be asked to sign an MOU or will be allowed to sign an MOU to participate, to be cooperators in two weeks. No edits allowed. This is after they've already completed all of their work, basically. As local governments, county commissioners have special expertise, regulatory authority, and we represent the public as cooperators versus open to the general public, so that's what cooperator means. It means we get to be the local voice in these federal plans if they would choose to follow the rules to allow us to do that. We will be ratifying comments that were submitted through our coalition and local governments at our next meeting. I just, that is, that has been the worst. The BLM RMP in Rock Springs is bad, but this is even worse because they're going to define what is going to be considered old growth. Is it a six-inch tree? Is it a 12-inch tree? Are they going to lock up the areas? Then they want to have fire prevention. How do you have fire prevention when you lock up the area and you don't manage it? So those are just some of the issues that probably will be discussed, but have not been discussed or shared with us whatsoever. The next one, the BLM has come out with their public lands rule. Another way for them to sidestep the public process, the local cooperative process, is just to develop rules. So as you know, many of, as many of you know, Wyoming is comprised of more than 17.5 million surface acres of land managed by the BLM. In late April, the BLM released its highly anticipated public lands rule. No public process, just a rule. This has been to work, they've been working to increase the ecological resilience of federal lands under its purview and to elevate conservation as a use on federal lands. In other words, violating congressional designations as to how the federal lands are to be managed for multiple use and sustained yield. Now, they have added that they can have a conservation use that third parties consisting of any of the following, private people entities, limited government agencies, will be able to lease these lands for conservation. I don't understand how that's going to work, and they haven't rolled out how they're going to implement this rule that bypassed all the public processes. They're also going to try to strengthen areas of critical environmental concern, ACECs in terms of allowing for temporary immediate designations, again bypassing the public process. So local BLM officials may decide a certain area needs immediate protection, they could declare an ACEC. They're further mentioned, the BLM will be able to apply health standards to all uses or all kinds of leases on the federal land. Right now, the grazing leases are the only ones that have to implement health standards of taking care of the resource. Now, all uses will have to, and so that, that might be a good thing. At least they're being consistent in their management of the health standards. Just in conclusion, all of this is happening without explicit authorization from Congress. It alters how the BLM manages land and could result in less land available for any type of multiple use. Just absolutely alarming. I just it's beyond my comprehension that one administration could turn the rules of the land upside down and defy them on every turn. I did miss the Young and Heart meeting, which I will follow up with them personally. On May 31st, the CLG, our coalition, submitted the Regional Sage Grass Plan Amendment comments, which we will ratify at our next meeting. May 31st, there was a special airport board meeting. They needed to have approval to install a water disinfection system required by DEQ, even though they're hauling the water from the city, which has already been treated, so that, that was interesting. $38,000 project. Upcoming, June 5th, Jim Zimmerman Retirement tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Just want to thank him for his years of service and for taking on the role as fire warden last year when we decommissioned our fire department, and for the great work he has done in building those relationships again for the county, with all of the fire entities in the county. On Friday, we have our federal partners meeting at the Chamber of Commerce, 9:00 AM in Rock Springs. June 11th to 13th, I will go to Lander for the Bureau of Land Management Resource Advisory Council meeting. The district BLM offices report on the projects they're doing, and there are some great things happening on BLM in spite of some not-so-great things happening. I'm on the special working group on wild horses. We're trying to provide some guidance and recommendations to the state BLM, and there will be a tour of what are the wild horse management areas, and if anyone wants to see wild horses, just go on 191 North, milepost 23 to 29. There are probably over 100 to 200 wild horses. Not sure where they all came from either. I don't recall seeing some of those colors before.
Thank you for that recognition. I think there's a lot going on with the different federal rules and regulations, and, you know, each of us have our own strengths and weaknesses, but I, I think that's certainly a strength of yours to keep your finger on that and continually keep us informed on all the crazy happenings that may be taking place, so thank you for your work on that, and we'll continue to fight back where we can.
Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your comments, especially on the ACECs, because we'd like to point out that while we were on the governor's task force for the BLM RMP, we were repeatedly told that ACECs do not restrict access in any way. Of course, most of us didn't believe that, and here we are.
Just making a rule if you don't like what's happening. That's the mode of operation nowadays.
Well, it kind of makes you question. You have an alternative, but then you have a rule on top of an alternative, so of an alternative. So you're criticized for not having public and cooperator engagement with the alternative process. And then on top of that, you have a public lands rule that's rolled out without any public engagement process. So it's difficult. Commissioner Slaughter?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mary, if I understood you correctly, and I think I may have, you referred to the possibility under one of these lands rules that they're, under the conservancy easements, there would be potential for people to lease under these conservancies. Wasn't that the topic of a bill before Congress that we saw that basically was going to have the ability for this to be traded on the New York Stock Exchange, and the intent then for those private entities to be able to buy those and lease those sections?
Exactly. That was just one side show for that rule. It can still be, the way that rule is implemented, it still can be, maybe it can be traded on the Securities and Exchange Commission Board, but it still can be purchased by out of country, out of state.
So once again, they've circumvented their own Congress to do that, basically.
They've counted the management. I do not know how the BLM even staff members can manage based on all these rules. Rock Springs RMP is the perfect example. You had the Resource Management Plan with those proposed alternatives. Now, you're going to have the Sage Grass Amendments, which will override whatever has been decided for the BLM RMP. You'll have a travel management plan, comes later. You have the conservation rule. All of these things, it just layer over the top of each other, and some of them are totally contradictory. I mean, how can you have four uses on one piece of land, four layers of something? You might have a Sage Grass thing on top of an ACEC on top of a conservation rule. I do not know how they can move forward with managing based on what they are trying to do, which is lock up everything.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
I just, I just want to mention how much I appreciate the work that Mary puts into our dealings with the federal government. She brings a wealth of history and knowledge to the subject that is, that is basically irreplaceable, and it allows the rest of us to coast a little bit because she, she stays so engaged in this process. And I know you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Jones also put a lot of effort into it, but, but I just, I just wanted to recognize the extent of Mary's knowledge and input into that subject.
Thank you.
Yeah, well said. Any other comments or questions? Thanks for your work, Commissioner. Looks like Commissioner Richards, you're bringing up the rear here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. As predicted, it was a relatively uneventful couple of weeks since I saw you last. On the 23rd, I joined Chairman West and Commissioner Jones at the groundbreaking ceremony for the Memorial Hospital lab expansion. It's a great step forward for our community, except it highlighted the problem with inflation in today's economy. Apparently, a $3 million contribution only buys two shovels, so the three of us had to share. Just kidding. It's okay, Irene. We handled it. On, on the 24th, I met Andy Hooton here at the courthouse, and he took me on a tour out to County Road 90 that we discussed two weeks ago, as well as a more general tour of the locations of the upcoming Trona Mines, where they will be and the roadways they'll, they'll affect. It was a, it was a good chance to get to know our Assistant Public Works Director, and, and to, to see in person the, the things that are going on in our county and the decisions we're making and affecting. On the 28th, I remotely attended an SEDC update meeting. There was some good discussion about updating our comprehensive economic development study, as well as some ideas for addressing the housing needs of the county. For those of you that don't know, the economic study or SEDs, as it's referred to, is a valuable tool that Christina uses when applying for some of the grants that we pursue. The one we're operating under right now was a partnership with Carbon County, and it's a few years out of date now, so it's, it's time to get some, some new updated numbers into that document. Also, that day, I attended the monthly Fair Board meeting at the Events Complex. They have been working to narrow down the alternatives in their master plan so they can move, move on to the next phase in their planning process. They've been trying hard to balance the needs of our local users with the need to attract revenue generating events to the facility, as they attempt to develop plans that are suitable for both groups. And I think they're heading in the right direction to accomplish both of those goals. Speaking of the fairgrounds, Wyoming High School Finals rodeo is going on out there this week, so if you get a chance to check it out, I encourage you to do so. On Thursday, I attended the Wyoming State Liquor Association Board Meeting in Cheyenne, which I followed with a tour of the Wyoming State Liquor Division offices and warehouse. One of the issues that the WSLA is involved in is historic horse racing. When the new HHR facility opens on the border south of Cheyenne later this year, Wyoming will have more HHR machines in our state than any other state in the country. That includes Kentucky. It has become a billion-dollar industry and one that affords very little local control. So if they asked if counties like ours would be amenable to changes in the statutes that would allow local authorities to limit the number of gaming machines in their jurisdictions, as well as have some more regulatory oversight over the licenses we approve, I told them that I definitely thought it was a good idea and agreed to be part of that discussion going forward. They were interested in the content of the last resolutions that we adopted for, for local HHR facilities, and wanted to include them in any proposed legislation that they forwarded. On June 3rd, I remotely attended a Legislative Minerals Committee Working Group, addressing some ideas for making the Industrial Sighting Impact Assistance Funding Program a little better. We tossed around some good ideas, including ways to provide for the front loading of some of the funds to address more immediate impacts as projects get off the ground, and we will meet again in a couple of weeks to try to finalize some recommendations to forward to the Minerals Committee. I want to thank Representative Larson for his work on the topic and for inviting me to be a part of the, trying to make that process a little smoother. Going forward, Wednesday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, there's a retirement party here at the courthouse for Jim Zimmerman. I hope everybody can stop by and offer him their congratulations on his retirement. I've worked with Jim off and on for about a dozen years now. I can't tell you how lucky the county has been to have him on our side. We're going to miss him around here, and I wish him all the best in his retirement. Eric has hired Alan Adams to replace Jim, and he's here in the courthouse today. So if you get the chance to meet him, take it. He has big shoes to fill, but I'm sure he'll fit right in. Due to some family commitments, I'm going to miss both the enterprise meeting and the federal partners meeting this week, but I'll catch up on both of those next month. On the 10th, I'll attend the Solid Waste District Board Meeting. They're in good hands now and moving, moving in a good direction these days, so I probably won't continue to attend those every month going forward unless they feel they need me there. On the 12th, I'll attend the Monthly Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting here at the courthouse. I'm not sure what's on their schedule yet. I haven't seen it. On the 13th, I'll remotely attend the State Shooting Complex Task Force Meeting, mostly out of curiosity to see what they've been up to. I, I haven't been impressed with their process so far, but maybe they've made some strides. Later that day, I'll attend the SEDC Advisory Board Meeting, and on the 17th, I'll be on my, on the radio for my monthly check-in with John King. And later that evening, I'll attend the Library Board Meeting, which will be held at the Rock Springs Library this month. I'm sure you saw the new capital request coming from them based on the new estimates to replace the boiler at White Mountain Library. I was shocked and a little disheartened to see that, as I'm sure all of you were, and I'm looking forward to discussing it with you further at our workshop this afternoon. I think that's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman, short and sweet. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Any questions for Commissioner Richards' report? Yeah, I too wanted to give recognition to Mr. Jim Zimmerman for his years of service to Sweetwater County. Definitely some big shoes to fill there for Alan, and, you know, I can think back to some of the different tasks that Jim helped improve throughout the county. I know years ago, they had a cleanup effort to clean up some of the different lands throughout the county and make them comply with different P&amp;Z regulations, and Jim had a heavy hand in that and did it very well, you know, with respect and optimism. And I think any of us can relate to, whenever you see him here in the courthouse, he's always happy and welcoming, and certainly was the case when I took office. So it's something that I won't forget. I appreciate his dedication to the job, and certainly Sweetwater County, and most certainly wish him well in retirement. Well deserved, and thanks for all you've done. With that, commissioners, that does conclude our reports. Job well done, and this will move us right along into Tab B, which is the action and presentation items. First up, we've got a South, or excuse me, Santa Fe Southwest Grill catering permit for the Solvay picnic, and with us this morning is Clerk Lane. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Before you, you do have the application for a catering permit from Santa Fe Trels to conduct the Solvay picnic from 6:18, or on 6:18, at the Jamestown Park. Forgot the name of it. To be held in Greener River at the picnic grounds in Jamestown on June 18th from 5:00 to 9:00. I apologize.
No problem. Any questions on this catering permit, commissioners?
I can't think of any difficult ones with Lane. She tries. But I would be willing to make a motion.
All right. That is your motion. We do have a motion by Commissioner Tomlin to, you're okay, to approve the catering permit for Santa Fe Southwest Grill's application for the Solvay picnic by Commissioner Tomlin. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse nay. Motion's unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Next is item number two. We've got a request for the closure of the Clerk's Office on August 20th, 2024, for the primary election, and we'll hand it back to Clerk Lane.
All right, again, good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Per Wyoming Statute 22-2-112, the hours of the county clerk's office on Election Day, the election, or the clerk's office can be closed for employees to help with the election for all non-land records transactions. So I do have to keep the lands records department open if it's not an official declared holiday from the commissioners. So I am just informing you, before I started advertising that, I just wanted to let you know that I will be trying something new this go-around, and I'm going to be training my clerks on the process and how to run the equipment so that I can have at some of our more larger polling locations clerk employees so that they can help out and be part of the process with communicating between the polling locations and the elections office on Election Day. If it works out great, then I'll be back again for, to let you know about the general election, but we want to see how that works, and if it helps solve some of the problems of having to run equipment around and, and sending people out to troubleshoot when there are issues. So before I started advertising it, I just wanted to make you aware that I am going to be conducting that this year for the elections.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on that or concerns?
Your land records department will still stay open?
The land records department will remain open. We will figure out a way to, you know, we've already let some of our title companies know, and we will make sure that they have a way in the, in the office to get to the records.
Okay. Questions, commissioners?
Is it an election year? Is it?
Uh-uh. It's heated up. We are now done with the candidate filing period, and the ballots are in the process of being, the information's being entered, and we will get those ordered very shortly. Thank you. Oh, any other questions?
None.
And I would like to apologize for starting the wrong meeting. I didn't have a link for the other one for some reason, and so I just assumed that was the one when I went out to it. So I do apologize for the technical difficulties this morning.
It's okay. I put us back thinking we had more time to go through the budget, but I guess that's not the case. I assume we need to take action on the closure of that. John, do you know?
No, there were two ways to do it. One is the clerk can close it without closing the land records or a resolution, but that's a different statute. So this one I can just, with advertising to the public.
Okay, so you're just informing.
I was just informing before I started advertising. I wanted you to be aware of what I was doing. So if people were asking questions, you would be prepared.
All right. Well, thank you. Next, commissioners, is item number three under Tab B this morning. We've got an MOU with YDOT for the use of Highway 530 plant site at mile post 19, and with us this morning is Public Works Director Gene Legursky. Good morning, Gene.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is a MOU with YDOT to use the 530 plant site. And what this is for is for the frosty project down on County Road 1. We need a place to stockpile material. There's 10 frosties, about 8,000 yards of material need to come out of that. So without a close place to do that, there's no way they're going to be able to get stuff done. So we talked with YDOT, their mineral dust, using their little plant site down there. Plant site works well because it's right on the north end of where 530 and County Road 1 take off, so they can stockpile material down there ahead of time, and then they will truck the material in, truck the material off that's bad, stockpile it at the truck, at the plant site, and then haul it to town or wherever they need to after the fact. So it should shorten up the duration, because if not, they're going to need 50 trucks. I mean, it's just almost impossible to get it done, because there's so much material that needs to come out of there. So that's all this is. There's some different agreements in there. We'll bury the material that can be onsite and clean it up for them, but other than that, everything is pretty simple.
Okay. Thanks, Gene. Questions, commissioners, on the MOU? Not at entertaining motion to approve the MOU with YDOT for the use of Highway 530 plant site at mile post 19, and allow the chairman to sign all necessary documentation.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion is unanimous. Next item under Tab B is item number four, the Annual Road Maintenance Plan and Agreement between Sweetwater County and the US Forest Service for 2024. We'll hand it back to Gene.
This is a once-a-year thing that we do with Ashley National Forest. It's all the forest, it's the agreement that we have in February. We have a meeting down there and say, these are roads we're going to take care of. These are roads we have problems with. You know, we take care of a ton of roads down all around the Ashley for them. They take care of a couple of roads. This is just solidifying that agreement to make sure everybody knows. It's already three months past due, but the Forest Service had a couple of changes that they were dealing with, so paperwork's coming out late. But like I said, it's no, no real change from last year, last eight years. And you guys did get Appendix A, correct? So you guys are aware of Appendix A. That got uploaded without that, and that's my apologies.
No problem. Questions on the annual agreement, commissioners? Not at entertaining motion to approve the Annual Road Maintenance Plan for the 2024 between Sweetwater County and the US Forest Service, and allow the chairman to sign all documentation.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posse nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Gene.
Yeah, a little plug in there. If you actually look at the total 170 miles, that isn't actually in, when we talk about 1,200 miles of road that Rodden Rich takes care of, that doesn't include the 174 down it. But it's actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so pretty good, pretty good handoff to those guys that they take care of a lot of miles of road. 1,200 official miles for Sweetwater County, another 170 for Forest Service. So it's a lot of miles of road.
Yeah, big county. It's hard to imagine. Thanks, Gene. Commissioners, we are about 10 minutes ahead of schedule, 13 minutes. So we'll go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll conclude with Southwest Counseling on a couple agreements there. We'll take, we'll try and resume at 10:10 if they show. agreements there. Take, we'll try and resume at ten ten if they show. Sounds good. Okay, we will call this meeting back to order. And where we left off under tab B was item number six. Which is the Southwest Counseling Service Fiscal Year Twenty-five Treatment Agreement with the Behavioral Health Division. With us this morning is Southwest Counseling Service CEO Linda Aker as well as Cory. Thanks for joining us. And good morning to you both.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. I do have Cory Rosetti from the board here today and I think online there could be two additional board members. Christie Capi and April Thompson did also say they were going to join if possible this morning and just wanted to acknowledge them.
They're not on yet, but we'll watch for them.
We're ten minutes ahead, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. We'll continue to roll.
We're going to continue to roll. Okay. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity. The reason I'm here today is there's two contracts with the State of Wyoming Department of Health, Division of Behavioral Health. One is the primary contract for Southwest Counseling and that's for all our outpatient services and our residential beds. And that is for eight million five hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and forty-nine and fifty-seven cents. What's important about that figure, it is approximately one million dollars less than this year. And that number is nine hundred and thirty-two thousand one forty-one eighty-nine. And it's less because behavioral health redesign starts July one, which is a major change in how Southwest Counseling will be paid. We used to get paid on a grant position where we'd get one twelfth, one twelfth of the dollars. And now we have to have people enroll into the tier system and we will be going after each individual for payment. So what that million dollars is really about is outcomes. It's to incentivize the centers to really encourage clients to be, do, do better in our community. And the way Southwest Counseling can get that, don't those, some of those dollars back, we're not even going to get close to that million dollars. It's a pilot project with the state this year, nine hundred clients. The state decides what counties they will be going into. So the counties will be able to say Linda's coming into our county and Sweetwater County. We would like the outcomes on Linda. And the outcomes are very specific. Community engagement is, do they have a job? Do they have a place to live? Are they engaged in the community? Now, if they're disabled or retired, it's a little different for them. Just are they socially engaged in the community? And then they want to know, are they engaged in treatment supports? And so if we do really well in those areas, we'll submit that to the state and they will reimburse us on a per member per month and the maximum payment will be fourteen hundred dollars per client. So it is to incentivize us and I understand it totally. I think it's a great for the the clients to have more of those supports. So this contract is for a total of eight million five hundred and eighty-six thousand three forty-nine fifty-seven. And it requires the signature of the board chair of the county commissioners.
Excellent. Appreciate the background on that. Can you help us understand with this behavioral health redesign? You've got the what was it, the eight and a half million that's secured, but then there's on the outcomes side of that up to X amount that I guess can be applied for. How does that process work? I know it's complex. I tried to explain it one time up here and confused myself in the explanation of it all, but in order to go after that additional, you know, million that you're down, what does that look like?
Commissioner West, that's an excellent question. The state is taking approximately almost a million dollars from all the larger centers. So there's nine hundred people in the outcomes pot at the state level. And that they will direct those individuals. If one comes into the community of Sweetwater County, then that will be an outcome measure for Sweetwater County Southwest Counseling. And we'll be able to draw it down per person fourteen hundred dollars a month, but that fourteen hundred dollars is if they're doing excellent in all the areas. They're working, they are engaged in treatment. There's no longer any issues with recidivism or getting back into the court system. So we know we're going to be able to draw some of that, those dollars down, but the probability is we're not going to draw nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars down. But the other positive thing about what the state's done is they're going to true us up every quarter, which means they know going after money individually is going to be very difficult. Because the other thing that happened with behavioral health redesign, and I'll just give you an example. We used to get paid a hundred and forty dollars for the priority population for an hour. In the new formula, we're only going to get paid eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. So that's a difference of almost fifty-nine dollars. So we're going to have to work harder for less money. So there's behavioral health design is really going to be complex for the agency and for our clients as well, but we don't want the clients to worry about this. This is our headache to worry about. And we'll, we're, we're just going to have to figure it out as we go. So they are going to truce up every quarter to what the money should be. So if I would have usually got, let's say a hundred dollars and I've only received maybe four dollars, they'll true me up to that hundred dollars. They'll pay the ninety-six difference every quarter. So that's really positive for Southwest Counseling and all the behavioral health centers in the state.
And is that just for first year that they do the true up?
Yes.
Kind of the I guess the trial run, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay. So the nine hundred individuals in the outcomes, is that part of the enroll process? Is that where? How do the individuals get into the outcomes process or classification?
Chairman West, excellent question. This Department of Health, Behavioral Health Division will determine that and they'll be working with DOC, DFS, because those are in that, those priority populations. And so they'll say Linda Aker's coming into your community. She's going to be at your center because if they want to really get the state subsidy, they're going to have to come to Southwest Counseling for those priority populations. And that's how we'll, we'll get those people into the system is through the Department of Health. And they're anticipating that the law And they're anticipating that the larger centers like Cheyenne, Gillette, Rock Springs will get the majority of those, of that population of the nine hundred.
Okay. And then those priority populations, that's going to be the tier one?
Tier one, tier two, and tier three, but really it's tier one. You have those people who are on parole or probation, who families are in crisis. You've got your emergency services for the SMI population, and that's where Title Twenty-Five would fall. So those are the clients that Southwest Counseling sees now. And so we're not too worried about that. We're worried about the less, the lower dollar amount for reimbursement.
Okay. Any other questions on this agreement, Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Southwest Counseling Service Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Treatment Agreement with the Behavioral Health Division and allow the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. Moving right along into the last action and presentation item before you this morning under Tab B is item number seven. We've got the Southwest Counseling Service Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Crisis Intervention and Subacute Agreement. And we'll hand it back to Linda.
Chairman West, this is an RFP that we applied for in February. And there was four categories that we could apply for. We only qualified for two out of the four. We qualified for crisis continuum services and for subacute beds. And the good news is, we did receive five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. Which is very positive. And what that means is right now, Southwest Counseling has five subacute beds or what was known before as crisis bed. And we are increasing that by four. So we'll have a total of nine, which is really positive for Sweetwater County. The only thing with this contract, it starts July one of this year. It goes through August of next year. And it most likely will not continue because it was an RFP and it was one-time funding.
Thanks Linda. This is part of that leftover ARPA money, as I recall, right, that everyone's been applying for. So we've had a few different discussions with, whether it's law enforcement or the attorney's office, obviously, you know, the hospital. And we learned recently that Natrona County is rolling out a stabilization bed program. And so we've had, you know, some very minor discussions on what that may look like here. Just to, I guess, try and go after some of the tiered population or, you know, the targeted population that may be titled. But then within the first, you know, twenty-four hours, it seems like the title's released. I believe the data shows since the beginning of this year, there's been eighteen titled individuals. And fourteen of those have been released within twenty-four hours. And so the thought process in talking to Natrona County is that, it would basically be kind of the first stop before, you know, any titles are, are taking place. Where that care starts with a stabilization bed. And then they determine from there whether it needs to go through with the title or if other services and continuum of care need to be offered. Such as a subacute bed that you're talking about here. What, I guess, what is your take on that? Do you see potential there? I know, you know, the Department of Health, we had just a brief conversation with them. They're willing to kind of help, I guess, support whatever avenue is needed for the community. And so, you know, this funding that you're applying for here is obviously for additional subacute beds. And what are your thoughts on this, I guess, pilot program that Natrona's rolling out with the stabilization bed?
Chairman West, excellent question. Natrona is a really good example of a crisis stabilization unit. Because a crisis stabilization unit or a twenty-three hour observation, they're, they are medically determined. You have to have a medical director, you have to have medical people on staff twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And they're able to do that because they do have what is called, their center in Casper does have a medical, they have nursing, they have an entire unit just devoted for crisis stabilization. But the other thing they have that we do not have in Sweetwater County is they have WBI, which is a psychiatric unit. And so in talking to that director up there, they are going to look at a twenty-three hour observation. Because they have that medical component. Southwest Counseling really does not have a medical director. We don't have nursing staff. There's so many things as an agency that we don't have. But if they find problems with that twenty-three hour and that person needs a higher level of care immediately. They're going to be able to just call WBI up and that person's going to get admitted to WBI. So they have a higher continuum of care than we do at Southwest Counseling. It's not saying we can't do it. I think it's going to take some strategic planning on stakeholders in the community to get it done.
Yeah, and I guess the concern is just that the individuals aren't getting a continuum of care, right? So if they go up and they're released within the twenty-three, I don't know where the twenty-three hour versus twenty-four hour comes from. But, you know, they're released, so to speak, back into the public. And there is no services that are followed up with there. So I know it's more complex than I'm making it sound, and I can identify that. But it seems like that's some of the hangup. And so some of those come back and aren't getting that care that they need. And I know law enforcement, you know, has a hard time sometimes with trying to figure out, you know, where to place these individuals. And so we don't want to title someone if, you know, there's another option there for them. And so this idea came to mind and, you know, whether that's a shift of funding or whatever that may look like. But I just wanted to see if you think there's an appetite for that. Because it appears the hospital is on board, very preliminarily speaking. And, you know, if we can make that happen and it has a better effect for certainly those individuals, but the community, I think, you know, that would be in our best interest, so.
Chairman West, I think it would enhance our services. I think the goal of the on-call worker is not to have to do a Title Twenty-Five. I mean, when you start taking a person's civil rights away from them and you're restricting them, that's a serious thing to do. But sometimes a person has to be titled for their own protection. I don't think you're ever going to get away from a person needing to be titled and restricted. But I think there's more that we can do in our community to address this problem. And I, I think there's a willingness to do that. I do think in talking to the state, they said, one of the things that's so important for people, and we see it all the time. We do follow the people who will allow us to after they've been titled. We refer them into Southwest Counseling. We have a case manager. Some of those individuals don't want anything to do with Southwest Counseling because we titled them. But for those who do, they have housing problems, they have transportation problems, they have money problems. They need a definitive place that they can land in. And the housing in Sweetwater County is very expensive. Affordable housing is almost non-existent. And that is one of the challenges that we're seeing for these people is a place to live.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I don't know exactly what it looks like, but I found it interesting just to hear about the pilot program and then to see the data here locally, you know. And is that another gap that we can address and provide funding for? And I know it's, it moves, right? Two years ago, Title Twenty-Five was around four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. This year, you know, the anticipated budget is two hundred and seventy thousand. So that has been a savings, obviously, to the county and certainly the state as well. But if we can provide those resources before and if they still need to be titled, then of course that, that funding is there. But, you know, when I see different services like this and agreements and then, you know, we're trying to, I guess, fill that void. It just makes me wonder if that's a shift. Things are always changing, as you know, with, within the mental health world. And I know that's complex, given the behavioral health redesign. But if you're open to that, I, I think, you know, it'd be worth at least trying to give it a, an attempt to see if we can all come together collaboratively.
Oh, Chairman West, I think the more we can offer appropriate services and enhance the outcomes for people. That's what we, that's what we need to be doing in our communities. And I can tell you, the new director up at Central, which is in Natrona, he would welcome a visit. I mean, they're a fairly large center. And they do have the availability of WBI and, you know, more resources than we have for psychiatric in their community. But they would welcome a visit from the Commissioners if you're interested in that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Toman?
Yes, I do have a question. Okay, so you're going to go to nine subacute beds?
Yes.
Do you have twenty-four hour staff to man the beds and, and how do they get put into a subacute bed?
Chairman West, Commissioner Toman, they first have to be evaluated by a licensed clinician of Southwest Counseling. To ensure their safety, to ensure that they are wanting to go involuntarily. Because they're not forced to go into a subacute bed. So we do the full-blown assessment on them first. And some people will reject it, Commissioner. Other people will say, oh, I'll try that, I'll go. And they get there and they'll say, no, I won't stay. And so it is voluntary. They can leave at any time. We really encourage them to stay and let us assist them in just getting stabilized in what's going on in their life.
I just, I, I, I know that mental health is an important issue. And we have a lot of ambulance calls now, or repeat calls because of mental issues. But it seems like with the budget and, and you're saying nine hundred clients a year you serve, was that correct? No.
Chairman West, Commissioner Toman, the nine hundred is the, the state's pilot project for Behavioral Health redesign. We, we serve approximately in a year's time, three thousand clients. But we even know with serving that many clients multiple times, there's so many more people who are in need of mental health services and substance use services. And one of the barriers is money. And stigma, of course, that people don't have the money to come in for services. But that should not be a barrier at Southwest Counseling.
It just is a lot of money per client is, is just unreal.
Commissioner West and Commissioner Toman, I would agree. And, and we know that mental health issues are just growing in our community. And we see more and more of it, especially with social media. It sparks differences in people and get them going down a different route that they would not usually think of. But mental illness is very prevalent.
Any other questions or feedback, Commissioners?
I must be allergic to you, Linda.
It's probably me. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve Southwest Counseling Services Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Crisis Intervention and Subacute Agreement as presented and allow the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you for your support.
Thanks for coming, Linda.
Bye-bye.
Looks like April and Kayleen joined us.
Oh, Kayleen came on. Goodness.
And Cory for coming over as well.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
April, also.
Yeah, I think I said her name. Next on the agenda, Commissioners, is an executive session for legal. And I do not anticipate taking any action, but perhaps, we won't know until we come out. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to enter to executive session to discuss legal.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion's unanimous. We're now in executive.